Okay, too many buttons. Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the January 11th, a meeting of the City Commission. This is a work session, and so the city staff will be presenting to us, and we'll be probably asking lots of questions. So at this point, if you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and this evening Katie Jackson, the city attorney, is going to be presenting to the City Commission a program about for governing body training. And just like with any job, you need periodic training. So the City Commission needs to, a refresher that relates to the Kansas statutes and how cities conduct themselves. So Katie, if you would take it away.
Thank you Mayor Fisher. Sorry, I didn't have this up, but while Jared is saving me here, I wanted to share a good news story because we hear a lot of bad things about recruitment and retention these days and how difficult it is. But I have a positive success story of recruitment and retention because in January of 1982, the city of Manhattan hired a Parks and Forestry Supervisor. And that person went on to serve in many various positions, including Assistant City Manager, Acting City Manager, Acting Director of HR, and Acting Director of Utilities. And in 2000, he was named our eighth City Manager. And so he's celebrating 40 years of service to the city of Manhattan today. So if you'll join me in recognizing Ron. Ron didn't know I was gonna do that, so I probably just made him really nervous. But thank you.
Congratulations, Ron. That's a mile, a big milestone. Yes, it does.
Well, so now to our topic tonight. And I kind of messed this up by not, I've got the PDF version. You all have copies of these same slides with you. Tonight, we're just gonna go into some specific issue training. As we've talked about, we would do as part of our training plan this year. A couple of things that we're gonna cover tonight are listed here, and of course, this is training. It's not legal advice. Every lawyer has to say that at the beginning of any presentation they make. It's just, you know, part of our standard presentation. But the reason I wanted to talk about these things tonight, because these are kind of unusual circumstances that arise. But if you, when we talk about the different statutes, state laws that impact your service, and that can, that can result in negative consequences, they kind of have one theme. And the theme is that they're ensuring a level of integrity and fair dealing in our elected officials. And so it is important to look at them, to kind of understand them, and look at some of the stories. And then also, I do want to review, we haven't done it for quite a while, I don't, that I can recall, our own Code of Ethics, which we adopted several years ago, and actually Commissioner Hattasall signed when he was mayor. We would talk about that a little bit, and some of the things that it says. And then we'll talk about next steps. I'm gonna try to make this a little more interesting because one thing when you do these kinds of presentations, it can be really, you know, you can see this and say, well, I'm never gonna take a bribe. Why would I ever take a bribe? But these things really happen. They're, it's rare, it's not something that frequently happens in the state of Kansas, but it does happen. And there's all kinds of opportunities for us to trip over these rules. The first statute that I have listed here, these are what's called, what the state law calls, the crimes affecting the public trust. And there's six crimes that can be committed by any public official in the state of Kansas. Most of them apply both to elected officials and to city employees and appointed officials, but some of them really are just the elected official. So everything tonight that we're gonna talk about applies to you. I'm not gonna read this, I mean, we all know what taking a bribe is. There's two provisions, there's one that makes it illegal for the biber to offer something to a public official for any benefit, reward, or consideration. And then there's also, it's illegal, of course, to receive a bribe. I think it's important, though, to look at some, just something to keep in mind, that bribe, when you think about it, it might always seem like a monetary, you know, I'm gonna give you $500 if you do this. But a bribe, it's broader than that. It can be any benefit, reward, or consideration. So it can be a non-monetary benefit that somebody is saying, well, if you do this for me, I could make this happen. Maybe it's not a $6,000 payment to your bank account, maybe it's something else. But just keep in mind that the bribery law is broader than just money, a monetary payment. And my first little story here is from Kansas City, Kansas, in 2016, at the Unified Government. And you don't have this in your materials, I'm just gonna tell you the background so you guys can have some information. A former staff engineer was indicted on federal charges, including the bribery statute, for accepting three, that he did accept three cash payments, $6,740, $5,530, and $5,100. So his whole career and life changed over this money. But what, who he accepted it from was an individual who owned a company that wanted street repair contracts. So if you think about it, this engineer was part of the selection process and had an opportunity to sway that. And the company paid him to award contracts to them. He routed the money through his own bank account, and I just noted this because I think it's kind of terrible and interesting. But he was also a minister, so he routed his funds through his church account as well. So anyway, that's just a small example of that. Pretty, that was a pretty standard bribery case. But the couple, these next couple, they're a little more nuanced than something as direct as taking a bribe. There is a state law that prohibits any city official, including elected officials or employees, from using a public vehicle that's in their custody or control for their own private benefit or gain, for private benefit exclusively. So, and that doesn't mean I'm using my city vehicle 100% for my personal use. It means I have a city vehicle, I'm using it 50% of the time for the city, but I'm also driving to visit my family two hours away in my personal capacity. And when I do that, I'm exclusively using it for my personal needs. There are exceptions, and we do have exceptions, that exist in our personnel policy. And that's, that is, a city can have a formal written policy that allows specific or personal use that's not a misuse of public funds. And we do that, it's pretty typical to have one if you have an on-call employee, that sometimes an on-call employee might have de minimis personal use. That's pretty common, but I think this is an important one to be aware of. Because, and I'm gonna talk about it a little more, because there are fairly strict rules about how city resources are used in terms of actual our dollars, but also our equipment that's funded with city funds. And so the second, one of the other highlighted parts of official misconduct, and this one I want, I think is one that's probably something the City Commission would find to be more familiar circumstances, but it's using any confidential info acquired in the course of service either for your private benefit or to intentionally harm another. That might seem like you have some trade secret or something, but confidential info is really broadly defined. I have it up there. It's just any info not subject to mandatory disclosure per cora. So I've had the question asked of me in the past. When we have an executive session, can I tell, you know, what happens if I tell people, you know, what we talked about in there? And we've talked about how that's a breach of the privilege, if it's an attorney-client session, it's, you don't have the ability, an individual doesn't have the ability to share that information without the majority, because the client has to decide to breach that privilege. This is something different that you have to keep in mind. If you, if we're in, and I use executive session because many of the topics discussed in there are not going to be subject to mandatory disclosure per cora. These are the types of things. If you take some information from there that's confidential in nature, and you use it for, as it says in the statute, that could be considered official misconduct. And maybe probably the most obvious application is, let's say the city, we have our executive session on real estate acquisition. You know a piece of property is gonna come up because we told you an executive session. You know what opportunities are there, you know what the limitations are. Maybe you don't even go and make a move on it for yourself, but you've got a friend who's a good friend of yours, you wanna have a good relationship with him, so you tell your friend, hey, you should go put an offer on this property. So that even counts. That benefiting your private relationships with no financial benefit to you can be a basis for official misconduct. So I think that's important. And I have, I have an example of this one that actually involves both the last two ways you can be, can commit official misconduct. And it's from Wichita, last year, 2021. And it's gonna be kind of one of your more extreme ones in some ways, and you can see it happening in other contexts. Because it's a Wichita police officer, and he heard, he heard on dispatch that the officers were going to be going to collect a woman who had a warrant out for her arrest. He was aware of this, he got this confidential information from his work, he heard this. He knew that, he knew that the officers were gonna go. As it turns out, he'd been having a Facebook Messenger relationship with this woman. They, they had only communicated over Messenger, but they were very friendly. He called the woman, he warned her that the police were on the way to her location to pick her up on her warrant. When the police got there and this woman was missing, they realized another person in that building had actually called dispatch to collect the woman. And that woman, the person who called dispatch said, I just got a text from the woman you're looking for, and she knew I'm the one who called dispatch. And she knew that because the officer had also said, this is who called dispatch. And that woman had asked to remain anonymous. And so he disclosed that to the woman who had a warrant out as well. He picked her up in a city vehicle, and he dropped her off at a corner so she wouldn't be seen by the police. So he has both things. He used confidential information, he disclosed that they were on their way to pick her up. He also disclosed an anonymous report to the woman. He didn't have any financial gain from this, nothing. He didn't even, hadn't even met her in person. They were just, as this, I liked this quote, they said that they thought they had a relationship because they would light up and appear to be happy when they communicated with each other on Facebook. So it sounds extreme, and of course, we don't have the same kind of, we don't get that same kind of information at the city. But we, we have people who make anonymous complaints about code issues. We have people who might email you and ask you to, you know, please withhold my information or whatever. And that may or may not be subject to cora, it depends on the context. And if you tell somebody, oh yeah, it was your next-door neighbor, they emailed me and I told them to report it, and that's the one who, who reported it, well, if you tell that to your friend or whatever, you might have grounds for official misconduct. Of course, it's all fact-specific, but the key here is to think about, you are being entrusted with a lot of information for the public. Some of that's confidential, and some of that requires and relies upon you keeping that information confidential. You can't misuse it, even if it's just to gain favor with somebody. The other part of official misconduct that I'm not, I don't have any examples of, but just to keep in mind, is there is a, one of the ways that you can be found guilty of official misconduct is if you have interfered with the bidding process. And it says if you have an intent to reduce or eliminate competition, and it gives some circumstances on how you might do that, then that can be official misconduct. The only thing, the only caveat I would give you here is, at the beginning, it says, except as authorized by law. If you, if you, if the city has, like we do, a policy that, you know, has a bidding policy and a selection policy and all of those things, if we're following that policy, then we can't be found guilty of official misconduct if we're following the policy that we have adopted. That's appropriate. But if we are, if any city official, whether an employee or an elected official, is trying to interfere, intentionally trying to reduce or eliminate competition, and does any of these things, discloses confidential info, accepts things after the deadline or tries to alter, then those things can be ground for official misconduct as well. This, I will just touch on very briefly, compensation for past official acts. This is kind of the reverse timeframe is bribery. Bribery is something that you are asked to do, you're given the offer in advance. This is bribery after the fact. So basically, it says that it's, this part of it is, makes it illegal for someone to offer a public officer the benefit, reward, or consideration after the decision was made. So if you make a decision that someone in the community really loves, and they approach you, and they say, hey, I've really appreciated your vote on that, I'd like to treat you to dinner tonight, and your family, come on down and meet me. Good time to stop and think whether or not that is compensation for past official acts, and whether or not it's appropriate. There are exceptions to that in the state law. It's gifts or benefits on the account of kinship or any other personal, professional, or business relationship, independent of your official status. So obviously, this law recognizes that people in the community might have other relationships with each other. It would have to be something that does specifically relate to your official capacity.
Katie, Commissioner Ready, I have a question. So is somewhere it says up to $25. So does this not even matter to the up to $25 piece?
Yes, that's a good question. This is the state law, so these are state crimes that a public official can be, can be ultimately convicted of if they're found, if they commit them. What you're referencing, and we are gonna talk about it, is the city's Code of Ethics policy. So that's actually, that $25 limitation is contained in there.
Thank you.
Let me just ask another question. You know, I get it if somebody says, hey, I'll take you out to dinner because you voted the way I wanted to. That's a no-go, that violates everything. But what if you're meeting with somebody and they buy you a cup of coffee?
In your fact scenario, is this like?
So somebody calls up and says, hey, I wanna talk to you about city code. And I go down to meet them at a coffee shop, and they pay for the coffee.
Okay, so again, just, everything here is so fact-specific. Obviously, that's how criminal law works. It all depends on the facts, and one fact can turn, turn it. But I think Commissioner Butler, where we can get to your question would be under our Code of Ethics policy. Because in your scenario, there's no bribery, there's no, I wanna buy you a cup of coffee because I like the way you voted. This is someone who just invites you to have a conversation on a city issue, and as part of that, they buy you a cup of coffee, right? So that's more gonna be evaluated under our city Code of Conduct, or sorry, Code of Ethics, with the $25 limitation that Commissioner Ready previewed for us. So, so we'll be able to address that under those, that part of it. And then maybe to be more specific, in those, that fact scenario, wouldn't be a violation of compensation for past official acts, because that's not part of your fact scenario, that it was, you know, a thank you for that or anything. This one, I wanna talk about, this one seems really, like it'd be really hard to have a fact scenario of presenting or permitting a false claim. And basically, it means, there's two things here that I think are really important. The first part of it, the act is, if you present a false claim with the intent to defraud, or you present a claim that is false in whole or in part, so you're the person who is submitting the claim. If that's false, you can be, there is a criminal violation under state law that you can be held accountable with. Part B, though, is permitting a false claim. And this is basically if a city official is aware that somebody is submitting a claim that is false, or, and I think the other part of it, is when they know such claim or demand is false or fraudulent in whole or in part. So if you suspect that they're lying, if you're a city official, you suspect that they're lying, if there's a reason for dishonesty, even the officials who receive it and who process it can be held accountable. There is, but I wanna, I think what's really important here about this one is how these, this one has been applied. When I hear claim, maybe like you, I think like a claim of property damage, we get those frequently. You know, my, I had a sewer backup, it caused this much damage. It's actually broader than that. There's a case, and it was in Wichita in 88, sometimes it's hard to find these reported, but this one went to the Supreme Court of Kansas. It's actually a situation in which the city's HR department was administering a federal program where they would fund employee, a private, if a private entity hired employees, the HR department was providing federal grant monies to those private employers as, for job training. So there's a law firm that applied to the program. They had two, two people who were, had on-the-job, on-the-job training as secretaries under this program. What the, what the law firm was required to do was then submit claims to the city of Wichita, and then they would get reimbursed for the compensation for the secretaries. So this is a claim that comes in a very different scenario from a claim under a city. It's a federal grant program, and you, we all know that this is something that the city does with some frequency. What happened was that the secretaries, the trainees, they, they, the forms that they filed were wrong, and it resulted in overpayments to them. And it was, the total amount paid by the city was $968.80. It was paid to the two trainees. The lawyer of the law firm who submitted it to the city had to sign it, signed it, didn't check it. And the lawyer was held responsible for presenting a false claim to the city for not verifying the discrepancies and for allowing basically the two women to be paid inappropriately. The court went so far as to say that he did not receive any part of the overpayments nor any part of the proceeds, all of which went to the two trainees. So this is somebody who just basically didn't take the time to verify the information that they were submitting to the city. In this case, they were charged with four counts of presenting a false claim, and was convicted of that, and then also were censured by the Supreme Court of Kansas because it was a lawyer, and his law license was impacted. That's a case from a long time ago, but I think it's important that we realize that part of our burden and our responsibility is to ensure that the information that we're submitting to the state, to the federal government, or what we receive has had that, has that accuracy there, that we've done, we've done due diligence. To wrap up this section, generally, these crimes are, they're either misdemeanors or felonies. It depends upon how much money's involved and the facts. They all can carry a possibility of jail time, that's pretty rare. They all can carry the possibility of fines. Notably, they, if you're convicted of any of them, there's a requirement that the person forfeit office or employment if they're a city employee. So obviously, those are fairly rare circumstances, but I wanted to talk to you guys briefly about ouster because I have gotten questions in the past about ouster. And ouster is like an alternative path to the crimes I just discussed. In fact, ouster is considered an alternative to the criminal prosecution statutes. And they can't, both can't be pursued for the same, at the same time with the same facts. An ouster proceeding is something, I put the grounds there, and it can arise in different ways. Officially, the Attorney General or the County Attorney has to investigate and initiate an ouster action. Cities, we don't have this, but other cities in Kansas, in their code of procedure, have a process where the city governing body takes a vote if they believe somebody has committed one of these grounds. If one of them, they have a process where the city takes a vote whether or not to refer it to the AG or County Attorney for ouster action. We don't have that, but other cities do. Regardless of the merits of the grounds for ouster, the elected official can be suspended from all duties pending final determination. So that can be, I mean, that can take some people to the end of their term. Ouster isn't used that often, but it is used. I mean, you, you probably all have heard of different circumstances when ouster has occurred. I think it's important to talk about the grounds. One of them is willfully engaging in misconduct, one is willfully neglecting to perform any duty. So willfully means that there's an intent, you're aware and you're intentionally engaging in that misconduct or performing, failing to perform a duty. A mental impairment, creating a lack of capacity to manage the office. And a crime of moral turpitude. Crimes of moral turpitude in Kansas are very generally sex offenses, any crime involving theft or dishonesty, very generally speaking. So I do have an example here, and I think it's a pretty informative one. I don't know, you may have heard this story, it's pretty incredible. It just happened, and started in 2013 in Prairie Village, Kansas. And a councilman, David Morrison, he had a friend who was homeless, and he was aware that his friend had, had had problems with drugs in the past. And October 27th to 30th of 2013, his friend, who was Kelly Malone, Mr. Malone, approached Councilman Morrison and said, I've had a home in the past, I've struggled with drug addiction, I'm afraid, I'm homeless now, I'm afraid for my life because I think that there's gangs who might be wanting to shoot me, and in fact, I've been shot at twice in the last year. Well, the councilman had a lot of sympathy for this. And so his solution was to use his access to City Hall to allow Mr. Malone to sleep there for three nights. So it sounds incredible, but, and it is in some ways, but he thought he was doing a good deed. In the process, though, he had to, in Prairie Village, the City Hall is attached to the police, there's a police station attached. He thought he was doing a favor because he truly believed this person was in fear for his life, and he was next to the police station, so he thought that would be a safe place for him to be. He knew this individual for 20 years, so he felt like it would be okay. He had him in the locker room, so he thought he'd kind of covered his bases. He was approached by a police, someone with the police, as to who this individual was. He lied to them about what they were doing there, said that they had a meeting after hours, and it was fine if they saw him around. And then eventually, he arranged other lodging for, and I'm, there's some other good details here, but I'm hitting the highlights for you. He arranged some lodging for the individual. Of course, it all came out. Prairie Village does have a process where the governing body has a Code of Ethics. They have a process by which they take a vote if they believe somebody has, has grounds for ouster. And Prairie Village did vote to proceed with oust, to recommend ouster to Johnson County. It ended up in Johnson County District Court, and the process for ouster is so weird. A judge makes the ultimate decision, but they have a jury there to advise them. They have a 12-member jury, so a jury heard all the facts that I just, and more, more facts, that I just relayed to you, and they recommended that the person should be, that he should be removed from office. Because they found it to be willful misconduct in office and willful neglect of duty. They said that he used city resources for personal reasons. They said that he had lied to the police. They said that he had put city employees at risk because he allowed an authorized person in the facility. The judge, the judge agreed with the jury, and they, he removed him from office. And he said, this is a series of events that can only be described as breathtakingly bad judgment. He said, it's particularly disturbing that he lied to a police dispatcher about the reason for Malone being in City Hall, and then attempted to spend the same conversation in court. The judge went on to talk about, you know, the health and security risks, that he has to observe the rules of the building and those things. So he was ousted, at least temporarily, because he appealed to the Court of Appeals. And the Court of Appeals ultimately disagreed with the Johnson County judge. And they said that if the grounds for ouster is willfully engaging in misconduct in office, they said it's a higher bar, it has to be, and I need to find the right, it has to be for a corrupt purpose or evil design by virtue of either a persistent and habitual disregard for the law or the official's public duty. Basically, the judge said, look, I'm not, just willfully engaging in misconduct, it has to be really bad for ouster. So he, so the judge said that he should be reinstated, and he was until he was voted out promptly thereafter. But that went on for years. I mean, this was a long, you can imagine the impact on the council member and the council and the city as this all went through. I will note, too, though, although the Supreme, the Court of Appeals said that he didn't commit, it didn't rise to the level of ouster, it could have risen to the level of one of those criminal statutes if they'd pursued that instead. That was noted. So instead, they just opted to do the civil proceeding instead of the criminal proceeding. So if another path had been pursued, the outcome would probably have been different. Even if you defeat an ouster attempt, it's not gonna be an enjoyable experience for anybody. And typically, people, you know, often people lose their, they lose by the vote later. But if, ouster, if you don't, if you don't forfeit the office, ouster puts a duty on the public official. If you feel that you've committed grounds for ouster, there's actually a duty on you to forfeit your office. And if you fail to do so, that's when it can be initiated by the AG or the County Attorney.
Katie?
Yeah?
This is Commissioner Ready. What is the definition of moral turpitude?
That's those crimes, it's not defined in the statute. There's a category of crimes that are considered moral turpitude, and it's generally sex offenses, thefts, crimes involving dishonesty. So anything that involves lying or theft of those things, typically. The last one I wanna talk about is recall. Recall is different from ouster because ouster is initiated by a public official, by your county attorney or an AG, and recall is initiated by the people. And the grounds for recall are more forgiving and lower, the bar is lower than the grounds for ouster. And I think that's because it's initiated by the people, by the electorate. And so I think that's an intentional choice by the legislature that, hey, we're gonna have a lower bar. If the people think you did wrong, that's different than if a government official thinks you did wrong. The first ground is conviction of a felony, that's pretty clear-cut. Misconduct in office, that is a violation of law that impacts the ability to perform official duties. So there's your misconduct again. Failure to perform duties prescribed by law. So this process So this process, like I said, is initiated by the public with a petition. It has to be signed by at least 40% of electors. It has a specific statutory process for what has to be in the petition and how it goes through it. But one thing I want to note for you all and the 40% of electors is that's based, that's, so it's based upon the number of people who were elected in the last election. So if a thousand people vote and two people were elected in that election, then it's not 40% of a thousand, it's 40% of 500. So it can be a small number, in other words, because it's not the whole, it's divided by how many were elected. Recall is actually more common than some of these other things. I think the public can get wound up about things. And they can, and especially in cities where there's not a lot of people voting in local elections. It doesn't take that many people. So I have a couple of examples of that.
Didn't we have that here over the 12 commandments that were hanging out in front of City Hall one time?
I don't recall a recall election as a result of that. Do you?
I think they did the petition, but my question is, you know, when, when, because they were upset about how one of the commissioners voted. So they, they did a recall petition on that particular commissioner. And, and, and I know that was a big deal. I wasn't on the commission then. And eventually the thing got moved down to the Manhattan Christian College, which is more prominent now than it was because it was flat out front here, which I thought was sort of funny, the, the people that were upset about it. But is there a way to, I, I, I don't think that ever came to a vote. I could be wrong. But is there a way that those recall petitions can be, you know, marked as not valid?
Yes. That, so when they are, so that's part of that statutory process. If a recall petition is, is, it meets the basic requirements, it has to be validated by the county. So they look at the number, you know, they make sure that it was signed by the right number. And then there is a cursory review that's done by the county in terms of whether or not there's sufficient grounds for recall. So if it's really outlandish, and I, I don't know Commissioner Butler, the facts of that, what happened, but there is a small check on something that's really outlandish and completely untrue. It would be, that recall petition can be rejected by the county at that phase, and then it wouldn't go to the vote. The thing is, the one, one caveat to that, so if there's something that's just patently false, it, it wouldn't proceed. The county is supposed to, if it's debatable, whether or not it's grounds, but the facts are known, the county is supposed to proceed, like to defer to proceeding to the election. So let's say everyone agrees that the facts are correct, but the public official says, "I don't think it's misconduct. I don't think I should, you know, it's grounds for a recall petition." If the county says, the county can say, "Well, I mean, that's for the electorate to decide, even if you disagree."
Maybe that's, maybe that's what happened because it was just a simple thing of, you know, keeping the 12 commandments out here or not. And I figure it was legitimate for somebody to vote yes or no. I don't see where there'd be misconduct there.
So I actually have an example, this Lebette County example is one that's really, it's different, but it's kind of in line with your question because it just happened last year. The recall was December 13th of 2021. And the recall petition, and this was a Lebette County commissioner, so not a city commissioner, Brian Kinsey, they had a recall petition. The basis for the petition was that the commissioner violated the Open Meetings Act because he had a phone conversation. He initiated and called another member of the three-person county commission. So they put, the recall petitioners put in the petition that this occurred. The Kansys AG's office, they reported that to the AG's office as a coma violation. That was enough to support the recall petition. But they had also raised concerns, but this wasn't one of the bases, about, the subject of the phone call was about a proposed wind farm. And there was a belief that the commissioner's family would benefit if it proceeded, not the commissioner themselves, but the family members. And so I, I suspect, although it wasn't reported like this, that part of the fury and the reason that the recall occurred for a coma violation was because of the subject matter of the coma violation. But what's notable is that the county in Lebette County said, "Yeah, coma violation. Sounds like it could be grounds to me." They proceeded it, so they let it go to the vote. The state's AG's investigation of the open meetings violation supported the misconduct allegation. So just the investigation. So they did it under these second grounds, misconduct in office, that's a violation of law. This is extraordinary. I mean, I, I know you all are familiar with coma and you know the things that can happen. It's pretty extraordinary that it served as a basis, but clearly it can. The, the thing was, in this article from Lebette County, they talk about how ugly it got. Everyone was accusing each other of lies. The commissioner was saying it was all lies. But because there had been a reported violation that was being investigated, the county allowed it to proceed. And then the commissioner conceded defeat when they lost the election. So that just happened in '21. The one that you all might, a little closer to home, that you might all recall was the Ogden Mayor, Jimmy Bond, was recalled in 2010. And they have a different form of government. They don't have an administrator, at least they didn't at this time. They have had a mayor council government. I think it's the same. But basically, in that case, the mayor had, had some personnel responsibilities, the, the mayor and council, because they don't have an administrator. And he terminated two lifeguards at the pool that he thought were behaving unsafely that they weren't, because they weren't guarding properly. And they claimed later they were on a break, but he didn't have the authority to terminate without the council. So the grounds for the recall were him overextending his authority. And he was also voted out of office as a result of that. It was misconduct in office because he went too far. So that's a little closer to home example. I guess I'd reiterate again to wrap up that section of this presentation that obviously these aren't frequent occurrences, but you can see that the facts are not so extraordinary that they're hard to imagine. It's something that can't imagi-, and it's something that you should keep in mind. I, I wouldn't suggest that the commissioners, that you all need to live in fear of these laws, but it's to keep in mind that these laws exist and that the things that you do, on one hand, they might just have bad political ramifications. On the other hand, someone might use it and use one of these laws to take more serious action. It has happened. I'm going to switch, and this is pretty short section, but it's important to touch on. It's the public purpose doctrine. I don't, we don't talk about it very much, but it also governs every public entity in Kansas. And what it is, is that all actions and expenses must be for the public good rather than a private benefit. So I guess some of the best, I'm going to give you some examples of this on the next couple of slides. So I'll do that in a second. But the, a private party can benefit and, from public action or public funds if there is a public welfare that is promoted along with it, some kind of public purpose. And if that private benefit is incidental to that public purpose. So it's not like the city can never grant money to a private party. We can certainly do that, but we have to be able to articulate a public purpose for that. And that grant to that, them has to actually be incidental. It can't be mainly to enrich that person. This last bullet is really important. If, if a city, if a governing body is challenged in a decision that they, they've used funds or resources for, that's contrary to a public purpose, so they've done it for some private benefit, there's a lot of deference given to the governing body. If you can articulate something, if other cities do it, all those things can influence that. But you do have a lot of deference. It's just not unlimited. The AG has written a lot about the public purpose doctrine. He gets a lot of questions over the years about whether or not a certain city activity or county activity or state activity is been, is, is weighing too heavily in the private favor instead of the public. These are some of the things that the AG has said, these are fine. One, and I'm going to talk about some things, he said, "Maybe they're fine." But the, the thing to note here is that each of these items listed, they say two, and they, you know, halfway through it, they say like, number one says to generate urban renewal. They all have that because those are the public purposes that were expressed by those public bodies. So in this case, grants to downtown businesses were challenged. In that case, that one actually came out of a lawsuit. I should, it said AG opinion. The AG references it constantly. That's why I have it here. But it was, originates in a lawsuit where the governing body awarded grants to downtown businesses to generate urban renewal, but the businesses that didn't get the grants, who applied and didn't receive them sued. And then said, you know, "This is unfair. It's primarily to benefit them. They're competing against me." But because that governing body could say, "No, we, we really did this for urban renewal. Here was our plan." They were found to not have violated the public purpose doctrine. Individual grants to landowners, I think this is, we don't have this issue so much, but this is private landowners, different circumstance, probably more residents. Grants to them to plug abandoned wells to prevent contamination of groundwater was fine. In that case, the reason that they had to prevent contamination of groundwater was because of some EPA and KDHE standards, and those wells were impacting, impacting the city system. But they said, "That's okay. You can give it to these homeowners." And then the last one was, funds were actually used to recruit physicians and to set up a medical clinic in an area that they didn't have any medical services, and that was to promote the public health and to have medical services. So recruitment, like basically signing bonuses were okay in that fact circumstance. Each of these things was obviously part of a bigger initiative of that public body, right? I mean, this isn't something they decided one day, "Let's just go and hand out 20, you know, 20 grants to downtown businesses." They went through a process, formulated a program, implemented the program, and had an express public purpose, which we do that a lot and, and most public entities do. The ones that the AG has called into question, this one, number one has happened. And it's actually been overturned when you couldn't have an articu-, when there wasn't an articulable public purpose. The AG has said specifically that you shouldn't be renting city equipment to private parties. That was, that's a common practice, or it used to be a common practice, especially in smaller communities, because the city might be the only one who has a backhoe in that area. And so it was fairly common practice for cities just to rent their backhoe because they were the only ones who had that type of equipment. The AG has said, "No, you can't do that unless you can articulate a public purpose you're doing that for." That's because that city equipment is paid for by the public funds and it's only supposed to be used for the public good. And if it's being rented and it's only benefiting that individual renter, there's no public good that's being promoted. They also said that a contract, a city contracted to do asphalt paving for private parties and schools. And they said, "No, you can't do that unless you can tell me there's a public purpose." And in these situations, there wasn't an articulable public purpose. That's why they said no. But if you, if you could articulate a reason why they had to do asphalt paving for a private property that benefited the public at large, then that would be different. You all know number three really well. This is a really pretty, pretty bright line rule, frankly. It's that you can't use any public funds or resources for election materials except to educate on an election. That's pretty well established. And then the last one, and this was also an example, is that using a city snowplow to clear a business driveway. This fact scenario was no money exchanged, but the city snowplow was out. There was a long, you know, like a long driveway. The property owner was like, "Hey, could you just run up and down this so we can get access? And, you know, just could take a pass with your plow." And the AG said, "No, you can't do that. I mean, there's no reason that you need to do this one person's driveway. You're not doing everyone's driveway." There was no money exchanged at all. The driver didn't get anything from it, but the, that is not a public purpose. And on one hand, it's, it's, on one hand, you can look at those scenarios and say, "Well, that's kind of ridiculous. Like, why not help your community, clear the driveway for the business owner?" It's because you're not helping everyone. If you're only doing one driveway, you're not doing hundreds. And so why does one person get the benefit if there's no larger public purpose over the, the whole? So that's, that's one of the ideas backing this.
Good question. Could you clear the driveway if it was the only gas station in town?
If you can articulate a public purpose, then maybe. So, and you asked a question, and I will, I shared these leagues, these slides from the league because Commissioner Motta, they're kind of, they're the evaluation that you would, that the league recommends that you ask in that, in your fact scenario. You have these with you, so I'm not going to go over them. But basically, the league has two slides of guidance for you to consider in if, if the facts are kind of squishy like that, if they're gray. In very general terms, it's about whether you can articulate something, whether it's commonly done. And I liked, I liked the last one on that, if city staff and the city attorney feel comfortable. And that's because they have an idea of what the city as a whole is doing. It's not because you should satisfy those individuals. It's because they know, "Hey, well, we had this other circumstance that we didn't do that, or we have all these other people who wanted it, we didn't do." And that, you're trying to get that perspective from your professionals. The league has four questions on this slide and then five on this next one. Four questions plus, plus their conclusion, which is if there are doubts, don't do it. So in your gas station example, you would, if there was some kind of situation like that, then you would, if it weren't clear, you would kind of go through these questions and ask yourself whether it was appropriate and appropriate use of public funds and resources. I also think, I do want to note the third one there. It's, it's asking what type of precedent, if any, would the expenditure set for requests by others? That's getting to what I noted before, which is it seems like, and not in your example because that could have a public purpose, but if you have a business owner who just wants, sees the plow coming, just asks for a quick pass. This one is looking at that. It's looking at the fairness to the community as a whole. If in some circumstances you are, we are using city resources, city time, city funds to benefit a private party, but we're not in others, we're supposed to ask ourselves what type of precedent is that setting for future similar requests? So that's important.
Yeah, that'd be a case like, we just had that windstorm here. If, if a city truck went and helped certain people and we didn't have citywide cleanup, because, you know, Ron made clear, we weren't going to have citywide cleanup. But I got a lot of calls on that. People wanted to know why, and I said, "We're just not doing it." And you got to get your neighbors to help, you know. So I think that's where you could get in trouble. I, I think, you know, that's good advice that, you know, was provided there on that.
That's correct, Commissioner. That's why citywide cleanup is okay, because it has a community-wide purpose and it's, it's administered the same way, community-wide. In individual circumstance, unless there was a public purpose, you know, if there was, the cleanup was there because they were on city, you know, maybe the, the debris was interfering with some city operation. That's different because you'd have a public purpose. But if it's just, "I'm going to clean up these five people because they got hit really hard," the city's in a really tough position if they help them and not others. That's a good scenario. Let's see. Okay, so that's kind of the state law, your state guidance. And the last part of this presentation is about our code of ethic policy. This is something that was, as I mentioned, it was adopted by the governing body in 2008. And Commissioner Hattasaw was the mayor and signed it. Like I, like I said, there's two versions of this. One of them is the one we're going to talk about tonight. It's the one that, that the city commission at the time adopted for themselves. And in that resolution, they directed the manager's office to have a similar party policy for employees and to have that in the personnel policy. So it exists. So the employee one is in the personnel manual. That applies to employees, not to you all. This is the one that applies to elected officials. So there's, there's technically two. And I wanted to point that out in case you get a question from an employee. I have included the full code of ethics in your materials, so I'm not going to read it to you or anything. I just want to highlight some of the points and, and also make some points about what we've been talking about over the last several trainings. There are five ethical principles for official conduct. They're listed on the slide. It's a lot of the things, if, if you look at those five things, it's the things I just talked about with the state laws. It's, the state laws might result in a criminal charge or some kind of civil penalty. So they have certainly a worse consequence associated with them. But what those laws are trying to do is to ensure that elected officials conduct their business upholding these types of principles. I have a yellow bubble there. It's kind of hard to read. I think it's really important because the last time we talked about code of procedure and why we need one and, you know, how important it is. Those codes of procedures are ethical to, they're not only efficient, they're not only effective, but they're ethical. And they're ethical because they're going to promote that efficiency and effectiveness I talked about, but because they uphold these principles. They have, they instill fairness to the public. They're more transparent. They allow you to perform duties at your meetings with quality and stewardship and integrity to the public because they provide you a format to do it within, a predictable format. So I just wanted to make that connection for you, that when we come back to you again with a code of procedure and we talk about why it's going to make us efficient and effective, it's also going to make us ethical. And I think that's important. We've had, this slide is interesting. We've had, we've had some quasi judicial items lately. We've talked a lot about the commission's role in quasi judicial matters. In the ethics policy, it limits, and it says, "The commissioner should not discuss, advocate, or vote on any matter." And it has scenarios. You guys have this in front of you. One of them is in violation of the conflict of interest laws. And those are the state conflicts of interest I'm not going to go through because you all file your, you know, your substantial interest forms. You're aware of those. So those are not what we're going to talk about. But the second part is that they shouldn't discuss, advocate, or vote on any matter involving a quasi judicial matter if you can't provide a fair and impartial decision. The reason I bring that up, we, when we talked about quasi judicial, we talked about the obligation of each, each official not to have prejudged it, to allow everyone the opportunity to, a fair, basically a fair hearing. We've talked about how if you prejudge a quasi judicial matter or you base it on information that's not disclosed at the hearing, that that can result in-
information that's not disclosed at the hearing, that that can result in a challenge to the quasi-judicial matter, so that could be overturned. This is a consequence that the official themselves could have. So technically, it could be a violation of your code of ethics if the, if the official has not provided a fair and impartial decision. So I just want to point that out, that what your code of ethics says is, it could be a violation of this, um, in addition to the fact that it might compromise your decision, it, you might have, you might have a personal, um, a personal violation of the code of ethics. This is interesting, and I think it's a lot of what we've talked about. I want to loop the third one back to our very first session, when I talked about the basics of local government and the framework for how you operate, and how, we talked about the league and the way that they, um, have the fifty-two ways to be a good public servant. And it's a lot about, um, it's a lot about acting in the best interest of the whole, it's about being fair and all of those things. And that's also contained in your code of ethics. So, in your code of ethics, it's asking you, um, it's telling you that you should not be discussing, advocating, or voting if you cannot act in the best interest of the whole community, and you'd act in your self-interest, your own self-interest. That's pretty easy for people to understand. But the second part is really important, and I think worth noting. If you're acting in the special interests of others to the detriment of the whole community. So if you have a really, you know, if, if there's a really loud and persuasive group, special interest group that wants a certain outcome, and it might be a detriment to the whole community, um, and you're unable to ignore their advocacy, then technically, under your code of ethics, if that, your decision's not in the best interest of the whole community, you should recuse yourself from that, not participate. Um, the other note that is important, and this is kind of what we talked about with the quasi-judicial, even if there is no conflict of interest, so this section that we, we talked about before, talked about conflict of interest, this, this policy is in imposing a duty on each of you to disclose any factors related to you, the official, that you devote, that you deem relevant to the concept of fairness in dealing with public business before discussing, advocating, or voting on any matter. Basically, what they're saying is, maybe you have some interest in the outcome, it's not technically a conflict of interest, it's not technically a detriment to the whole community, but, um, you feel like the public should know something about your decision, then it requires you to disclose it. The other section that we talked about before was the twenty-five, um, the gifts. And so this is your, in your code of conduct, that, or code of ethics, that says you can't accept any gift, gratuity, or benefit, and then it uses the word gift. So when I say gift, it means all of those things. That any reasonable person in our community would believe was given to you primarily because of your official position, if it exceeds $25. So Commissioner Butler, I guess if that cup, cup of coffee were really fancy and it were $28, then you wouldn't be able to accept it. If it's $2, that's not going to be an issue under this provision. Or it's cumulative over $50 in a twelve-month period. So I guess you might keep that in mind if the same person's buying you coffee.
But what happens like, when they ask Mayor Morris to go give a welcome speech to some group, and they say, "We're going to give you breakfast"? Is that technically a violation? Because that happens all the time.
Well, I suppose the question would be if that's really in excess of $25. I, I guess I don't know all the facts. I mean, it, it would be probably difficult to suggest, in most cases, where they're, that she's there in her official capacity, that the value exceeds. The ticket to the event might exceed that, and we're going to talk about tickets in a minute. So like, the event itself might be a $400 ticket, but does the free meal itself exceed that? I don't know. I mean, it would be a fact question, Commissioner, under, under our policy now.
Yeah, generally, I just drink the coffee to avoid that potential.
I think it depends on if it's prime rib, or, or a hamburger.
And if it's the State Chiropractic Association, of which there's two local doctors, a part of the group, versus sixty-eight people from Dodge City, Wichita, and Kansas City, it's not like they're going to, that organization isn't, you're not going to, you won't be able to benefit, that organization won't benefit from anything that the city commission might ever vote on, most likely. Does there have to be some kind of a, sort of a connection that the organization, or the group, or something, might actually ever have something before the commission, or does that weigh into it at all?
Um, no. What, what it does, the, but the factor you're looking for is the part of this that says that any reasonable person would believe you were given it just because of your official position. So since you're a chiropractor, and you were invited to that association, it's probably more likely, or maybe i- it's correct, that you were invited because you're, of your profession, not because of your official position. And that's different. That's why the, what you're looking at, and what you're looking, that we would look at is if it's primarily because of that position. So I think that would be your distinguishing factor. Um, so it also says that you shouldn't accept it if a reasonable person would believe that it's intended to, and I'm going to stop there, intended to cause the official to act in a preferential manner. That can get you to, in trouble. That almost could be a bribe, or some other kind of tit-for-tat that can get you in those criminal, in trouble with those criminal laws. But the second part is, as a, if a reasonable person would believe that it's likely to cause you to act in preferential manner, and that just might be, I don't really, you're not consciously intending, you didn't say, "Oh, yeah, I'm gonna, you bought me dinner, I'm going to vote for you." Instead, you're thinking, "Oh, I have such a favorable opinion of this people, you know, I want them to do well." You know, it might be more general than that. Um, but if they, if, that's separate from the value, okay? So that doesn't, that's regardless of value. So if that, um, if a reasonable person in Manhattan would believe that that cup of coffee is being purchased to persuade you to do something, or, um, going to cause you to do that, then that could be a violation. If it, if it's not, if a reasonable person wouldn't believe that, then it wouldn't be a violation. I just, the point to take there is, there's no value attached to that.
So, Katie, this is Commissioner Reddy. Um, if you're an elected official, and it happens to be an election year, and you're running for office, uh, and people donate funds, so is that also part of this?
You're okay. Well, that's the exception. That's on the next, I just went ahead and proceeded. Yes, there's campaign, um, the policy doesn't include any kind of campaign contributions, campaign activities, as long as they're in compliance, uh, compliance with the Kansas campaign finance laws. So those are completely separate. Campaigning is not, not part of it. Um, and it, but there are a couple of things on this slide to note. Um, again, you can't accept any gift primarily because of your position if a reasonable person would believe you're under an obligation to, or influence of, the donor. All these are so heavily fact-specific, but these are the parameters that the governing body established. The last one, I think, is pretty interesting. It also doesn't have a dollar value, but it's, if it's an item that consists of cash or anything easily convertible to cash, says it's entertainment tickets regardless of value. So if you're given, you know, a ticket to a sporting event that it really only costs eleven bucks, or you could only sell it for eleven bucks, that's still, um, a violation, because it's too easily converted to cash. And, and cash of any amount is a problem. So, this was adopted by the city commission. Um, a couple of things to note about, so I guess the next question for me is going to be, "Well, what happens if, so what? You know, what happens if I violate it? What happens?", right? So, under this policy, each official has the sole responsibility and authority to determine, you know, if the conflict of interest exists, if there's a duty to disclose. So it does say that the commissioner can get, um, guidance from the city attorney's office, CMO, or other staff, or even another commissioner, if it's within compliance of, of the Open Meetings Act, and that the official has to consider all the factors a reasonable person might consider. Um, basically, what that means is, it's not, it's not a matter that, you know, if four, if three commissioners feel that Commissioner number four violated the code of ethics, and that person says, "I did all of this. I don't believe I did." Um, they make, they, the person who's being accused of that, makes the ultimate determination under our policy. Um, Commissioner Hattasol, you probably remember, that was fairly heavily debated, that aspect of it, when it was adopted, in terms of what the consequence is. Um, I guess there could be a scenario where, in an extreme circumstance, a violation of our code of ethics could then somehow be connected to a recall, or an ouster, you know, that there could be, well, the law, or the misconduct you can, you, uh, committed was a violation of your ethics policy. I think that would be difficult, because our policy doesn't have a process for the governing body to evaluate whether another member, um, violated the code of conduct. We don't really have a process for that. Yes, Commissioner?
It's, it's more of a self-policing thing.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I just want to, I, and I think that's primarily the outcome of it, is it's self-policing, but I would, I don't want to foreclose the possibility that someone couldn't use that and slide it under one of those other state laws. I, I imagine there could be circumstances where it could be used in that, but the policy itself has no consequence, um, for the public official. It's, it's a guide, guiding document. So, that is everything I wanted to cover tonight. I am going to cover, um, these are, this is the same slide you've been seeing at the past, um, the past events, and you guys have a commissioner treat coming up. Um, we're going to have future training. I, we're going to do, we have another training scheduled in a few weeks, where we're going to get into Cora and Koma again. Um, that's really a whole topic of its own, but I really wanted to cover this tonight, because we've gotten questions recently about our code of ethics and those things, so it's good to refresh on that. Um, and then the other thing that will be coming to you for action would be, um, the changes that we've talked about. We've talked about at the last meeting, the kinds of things a policy manual would have. Um, we need to have some resi-, um, some action items related to that. And my suggestion, so we, what we've done, um, in these trainings, is we looked at the fact that we have, uh, we have a public meeting policy manual resolution. That's the one that primarily deals with public comment, but it has some public meeting, um, items in there, and we have this code of, um, ethics policy. We have a couple others that sort of tangentially relate. So a policy manual resolution is really the way that our governing body has, um, implemented these types of rules for itself. Um, I would suggest that we look at those and decide whether we want to consolidate these things. I don't necessarily want to reopen all the other ones, but if it makes sense to have one code of procedure that includes your code of ethics, um, and had, and also covers things like motions, and we need to cover things like the, um, kind of absurd occurrence that happened last week, because we have a charter ordinance that says that we have to have meetings on the first and third of each month, and we have no process to change those meetings. We have to call a special meeting. So we need to adopt a process so that we can handle those kinds of things more appropriately and more easily. So regardless if we consolidate it into one, or if we have different ones, a policy manual resolution would be the most likely format for the commission. Um, I mentioned charter ordinance, we need to do something with that. It depends on what we're going to put in the policy manual resolutions. And then it's, it's a longer-term goal, but we talked about the things in Chapter Two, which is administration, about how several of those things are outdated. Um, those would be the last thing to do, um, but we're going to want to update those too. So those would be our upcoming actions. If you have any questions at all, I'd be happy to entertain them, and, or any comments on the upcoming actions.
Is the policy for city employees comparable to the policy for city commissioners?
Yes. It's very similar.
Is it time to figure inflation into the $25, $50 limits? Since it has been twelve, what, twelve?
Two thousand eight.
Yeah, thirteen years, fourteen years now.
Yeah, that's a, that's something that could be considered.
Now, that'll get you a burger and fries about now.
Yeah. Yeah. That's a change we could, if we, if we would like, if we would like to consolidate this, I think consolidation is helpful, because when we have to look four or five different places, it's easier to overlook something that might apply versus having one consolidated procedure. Ethics could stand alone, though. Ethics are kind of their own thing, but, but we could, if we decide to consolidate and want to change it, we could make those updates. We could also address food more specifically. I recall that dinners and things like that were a part of your conversation in 2000, when it was adopted in 2008. Things like, if you show up to an event and you get a free meal, what is that? I know that we talked about that. I'd probably need to go back and re-watch some of those, or revisit those minutes to kind of get the full breadth of that, but you, you probably recall that that was, I would make, I, I was, I recall it being discussed in detail about the meals, and, and I think, frankly, I think my recollection is that the outcome was, "Well, those meals shouldn't really ever be worth more than $25."
Yeah. Don't, don't ever, don't overestimate my ability to remember things.
Okay, well, you signed it, though.
I, I signed a lot of stuff back then, just like everybody.
So, you would just be thinking what the new amount would be, given inflation.
That's fair, yeah. We could look into that.
So some of the things, for example, if, um, a K-State game or supporting events that you mentioned, sometimes those tickets are like forty-five, or, and if you get an invite, I've often ended up paying for those, because I didn't want that, uh, to be called out as, um, not, because it's over $25. So I just remember that, or I don't remember why the twenty-five, uh, kind of stuck with me. Um, there are times when the city pays for our things, our, like if we go to a Fort Riley event, or luncheons, and, so where, where is that, when the city pays for us, or when we pay for ourselves? And what is the, um, difference, I guess?
That's a good, that's a good point. So when the city pays, or you pay for yourselves, this policy doesn't apply. When the city pays, it's because, it is because of your official function, but there's no, there's no possibility that the city is doing it to, um, influence you in some way. This is all geared towards what I'd call like, third parties. So community members, people who aren't part of this, I guess a city employee could do it, but they would be doing it in their personal capacity. It's about the, the person in the community who's approaching you with these things. The city paying for your expenses is not a violation of these policies. And just a note, Commissioner Reddy, um, the tickets, as I mentioned, just to, for the future, I know that $25, it's, it's an easy number to remember, it's, it's kind of something that we think about most often, but there is not a value, um, that's attached to tickets. So the sporting event, if the K-State ticket, you could, you know, like, sell it for twenty bucks, and maybe that's all it's worth at the time, that's less than twenty-five, but that would, it doesn't matter the value of that, um, sporting event ticket, under our current policy. So in other words, it's a good decision to pay for your ticket.
Yeah. Even like when country stampede was here, or there are events, they, they give it out of, uh, they would like to have you present to support what's going on, or part of that relationship, uh, but it doesn't occur to them that we might have this code of ethics thing, so I try to pay for ourselves as much as possible.
But on something like that, it's the city's, um, get, Kansasian guest tax funding the Chamber of Commerce CVB, which is giving us the tickets. So that's, and the CVB isn't, that's, that's my question, is like, it, it's really, the city's money, the city is paying the CVB to, to help sponsor the, the stampede, and so on something like that, I, I didn't, I, I didn't lose any sleep over those free tickets, because it was a Sunday and it wasn't that valuable, but based on the fact that it was really the CVB, which is, uh, acting as an arm of the government at that point, what do you think about that?
So if, just to clarify, the tickets that you received came from the CVB, not from an individual. So, um, I think that would be a very, uh, I don't want, under this policy, that would not be, typically be acceptable. Your reasoning makes sense, except that the CVB is, they're not acting, they're not acting as an arm of us, they're a contractor for us. So we contract with a lot of people to provide us services, lots of different services, so they're just a contract. I mean, for very simple terms, the relation to a, you guys approve the contract every year, that awards them those funds to perform those services. Theoretically, another organization could come in and want that role. It's not realistic, but it's, it's possible. It's just a contract. So in those circumstances, um, I think you would view the CVB as a contractor, and, and not with, um, they have a, they have a different role than a lot of contractors, but frankly, in, any year, they could lose that money.
There are also times when, I remember, uh, some, I don't remember if it was a K-State, some performances, or some other events, where they just had tickets on the counter at the restaurants where we went, because they were giving them away. And so they had little value at that point. So, but times have changed.
Well, and, and the facts, and I don't know this facts, but remember, it has to be given to you because of your official position. You know, if there's free tickets that are at, sitting out, and anyone could take them, that your friend next to you, who's in no official capacity, can take one too, that's not necessarily because of your official position. I mean, if it's, in other words, those are offered to any taker, right? That, that would be difficult for someone to suggest it was provided to you primarily because of your official position, under those facts.
Wouldn't apply.
Yeah, when anybody could have picked him up at the time. Sure.
Question, like to change that, how we had to have the special meeting, and then we could only talk about those things, for us to change that takes a charter ordinance? And I guess in my follow-up question is, what is the definition of what, or what does take a charter ordinance? I know the library takes one. When we dissolved or got rid of our relationship with the healthcare, that took one. I mean, what constitutes that supermajority that you need for things?
A charter ordinance is when there's a state law that governs the situation, and the state law is non-uniform. That's critical, non-uniform. If it applies to cities and it governs something, a city can charter out of that state law requirement and adopt its own rules. So the charter ordinance is, if you, if you go back and look at the whole, they always start out by saying chartering out of KSA, da-da-da-da, because they're exempting us from that state law. And, and then what you're supposed to do is exempt and then have substitute provisions that the city can adopt under its home rule authority. If it's a uniform law, you can't charter out of it, we're just subject to it.
Okay, so that, that Health Department and the library were then governed by some state law that we chartered out of to do that arrangement?
Yes. And I would like to look at the specific ordinances. There are state statutes, actually just looks at them for the libraries, and I'm not sure which one specifically. I think it's the funding.
It's the funding, it's the six mil limit that takes a charter ordinance to change.
And yes, that's, and that's because the library laws in the state, they only apply to cities or counties that own library, or that, that have a history of a library, and I say own, some do own and operate it, and some don't. That's not, obviously not, I mean, that's not all cities, so you were able to charter out of that at the time. And it, some of, sometimes the laws say, and I don't, some of them will say that it's uniformable, but a city can like adopt its fee, or whatever, by charter ordinance. That's, that's the minority of charter ordinances. Most of the time, we're chartering out of a law that's applicable to us through the state statute.
Yeah, and then, I guess the Health Department was because usually it's the county that has the Health, Health Department.
You mean when we created the joint?
Well, we created it, and then to get out of it, we needed a charter ordinance as well.
We had to repeal the prior charter ordinance. Yes.
Katie, do we have to consider being a first-class city with our charter ordinances as well? Second and third-class cities, we wouldn't necessarily be looking to differences between those two. Is it, is it only first-class cities? Does it factor into a charter ordinance whether or not it impacts second and third-class cities?
In most cases, it, then yes, if it's only the first class, it's not uniform.
Yeah.
I, I'm not going to say that sweeping, but that's why we were able to charter out of the, so for example, the Charter Ordinance Number Eight, that is a charter out of a first-class city-only provision.
Yeah.
So, you're not always looking at every class of city at the same time.
And our transient guest tax also requires a charter ordinance to levy the tax that we do.
Yeah.
It's another one of those non-uniform.
That's a good example, where the statute dictates the necessity for the charter ordinance to do the levy. That's what I talked about, where some are, some, that's the very small number, that's why we have the charter. For the most part, it's to get us out from a state requirement. Any other questions?
See, we're talking about upcoming action. I say an email with, you know,
Yeah.
the things that I was interested in doing with some specifics, and I don't see a problem with consolidating it, but I'm, I'm really not in favor of some of the stuff we talked about earlier, which is what I said in the email. But like particularly, I don't want to ask permission to have to speak. I think what we've been doing has been fine. And, and so I'm not, I'm not for a major revision. I think there's some things we can tweak on what we're doing, but I don't think we should spend a lot of time trying to rewrite the, you know, the entire wheel at this point.
I did order, to that point, Commissioner Rightler, I ordered the Code of Procedure from the League. They have a model. They have a short version, which I had last time, and I've received the book since then, and that's going to serve as the model for most of it, but a lot of it is, it's like, things like how to, you know, a motion. If you can amend a motion, how to do that. It's things that you're really doing, kind of by practice, but maybe since it doesn't come up as often, we're not all familiar with what to do, so it has instructions for those things. So, that, that would be new information that we haven't had, that would really help us in those kinds of circumstances. So, and I'm happy to show you the League book if you want, but it, it's broader than just things like yielding the floor. It's things like motions, moving meeting times, notices, all those kinds of things, so.
Katie, did you want feedback from the previous sessions you did? Because if so, then I can go back and do some of that. But even as Commissioner Butler was talking about, the public comment piece, I, I think we have something good in place. We just revised it just a couple of years ago, maybe three or four years ago, I don't remember. And I don't really feel the need to modify that from five minutes to three minutes, or just have 30 minutes. We had lengthy discussions about public comment. So if that's something you need more feedback on, I'd be happy to provide more of that. But that's one that I didn't feel needed, substantial change to it.
If any individual commissioner has comments that you would like to send to me individually, I'm preparing a draft, and what I would, it will come to the commission, it won't reflect anything, but it would, the draft would be based upon what we already have adopted, plus the information that the League suggests, the things that we're tripping up on, things like, you know, being able to move a meeting time, those kinds of basics. So it would add those things, but then I can look and see if there's anything I need to change or incorporate, and then, or make a list of discussion questions for you all when you consider it. Some of the thing, the comments may not, it might be in the League's thing, and so it won't be in it, you know, it would be in the form regardless. So it's up to you, Commissioner, if you want to send them individually. I always, when I put the draft together, I look at what we have, I look at what the League does in other cities, try to compile, you know, the standard, a standard version, something that's generally represents what cities generally do, and then of course commissioners can tweak it. And if commissioners make suggestions, then I know to look for those things as well, so. That's fine, it's up to you. You can either, short version, you can email it to me, or you can wait until we present it, and we'll, we'll be starting with a draft, so we'll have an opportunity to make those changes.
I'm happy with the, more or less the way we do things without the, asking the mayor's permission to speak. I do think it might be helpful to be, give it a little order, like, starting at one end or the other, and have a commission, the commissioners, you know, just kind of react, rather than, unless the commission doesn't want to do that. I, I don't know how anybody feels about that yet. I, I would like to make it simple with regard to the special meeting. Having to give a notice for a five-minute meeting before a special meeting, special meeting seemed just, you know, silly. But, you know, because it's state law, then if we have to do it, we have, you know, that's the way I feel about it. In order to be legal, if we have to do it, then I am willing to just pace through it as quickly as possible and, and get past it. I am happy with, satisfied, I guess, with the five-minute public comment. I think more often than not, people in, run out of time when they're trying to, to stay within the five minutes. And there's, there's not been, there's not really anyone that's, you know, some people try to get a little bit more time, but we, we have not had a lot of abuse of that at all, as far as I'm concerned. Compared to other, maybe the communities, you've been listening to the City Commission meetings in other communities, and maybe reacting to that, but I haven't seen that here as an abuse in any way. So I'm satisfied with the, the five-minute limit. What was the other, oh, the, the use of the term "call the question", I think, is, is a Roberts Rules thing, and, you know, people use it sometimes just to call a vote, but that's not what it is, so that's, maybe we just need some training on that.
Thank you.
If I'm going to be chair, then I, mayor, we all need to understand the same Roberts Rules type.
I do think, just an observation, if I could, and we've talked about it a little bit, in that, is, is the process of, of an item, and the, and the sequencing of the discussion. I mean, it's, you know, I would say more traditional than not, especially the past couple of years where motion, second, you've had a lot of discussion upfront, and sometimes you convey your intent even before we've had much of the public comment. So typically, that would come after the public comment, and a lot of the positioning of how you might be thinking would be after a motion is made, and you're discussing that particular motion. So, those are some process things that I think it's, it would be good to, and I'm assuming that's probably in the League content as far as recommended for, for how you process things. But there's reasons we haven't, you know, adopted things like Roberts Rules of Orders because a, a motion to table stymies discussion essentially kills the issue, if it's, if it's successful. So, those are, those are some of those things that, that there's reasons we, we haven't adopted those specific types of orders, if you will, because some of them are, are meant to be counterproductive, potentially. And, and if a majority might be appearing to pass something and a minority wants to table the item, just, just so it's not considered, that's not necessarily the best course of action. So just things to think about as we move into that, that process of, of that, that might be a little bit better deliberative and representative of handling a particular item on a regular basis, as far as, versus coming out early and saying, well, you know, before you even hear any public comment, that, you know, I'm, I'm supporting this application, or whatever the case may be. So, good for thought.
Yes.
I think it's especially critical in a quasi-judicial situation. You do not do that. But we all need to understand the same parameters.
We do have one schedule item while you're here, if we could just, and I think we sent an email out, so for, I think you've all indicated that the treat, the retreat on the 28th would work for you, and we're looking to go mid-morning to mid-afternoon. I know there's a retirement for Director Butler late afternoon, so does that work for everybody, and can we go ahead and plan on that? I guess that's kind of, we're looking for some feedback.
Ten to three?
Ten to three, yeah.
I, I just blocked it out when you start from the beginning, so I'm good.
All right.
Right now, we got it from 9:30 to 2:30, just to give you a 30-minute window to get to, I believe Director Butler is.
I think their remarks are right at three, so.
Dream Museum.
Is that, is that okay, 9:30 to 2:30?
Where are you thinking about having it?
Uh, we haven't decided that yet, but something. Offsite. The receptions at the Dream Car.
Yeah.
Museum, so, all right. Appreciate that feedback.
Okay. Are there any other, does the Commission have anything else?
Well, how many people will be at the retreat? How many of us, I guess?
I would not anticipate, you know, much more than what we've got here. Typically, I don't think we're asking our department heads to all come, so it's mainly to kind of focus on, on, on your issues.
I just want a big space if it's a lot of people.
Sure. No, I recognize that, so I don't know whether it'll be up at the zoo, or there's some good spaces there. I think, that's our intent as well.
It's a public meeting, but usually it's just the only, the media will come.
Yeah.
That's about it.
We usually have a few.
Will all, will come, will all of our, will all the commissioners be there?
Yeah.
Sometimes we don't know till we get there who's not coming, so.
I think everybody's coming. My, I just didn't want it in a small space.
Yeah. Good point, Yusha. Okay. With that, I think, okay, let's talk about adjournment and the rules for adjourning. Officially, we need a motion and a second and a vote. Our tradition is that we, when we're through, the mayor just closes the meeting. And I, that has worked well and more efficient, so Katie, you better talk to us about it.
Well, Mayor, we currently don't have a policy, so our practice is governing, but I can tell you that the, the policy of other cities in the League is to make a motion, a second, and, and vote on it because of the possibility that the presiding officer will adjourn it before the rest of the body wants to. You can, and we have not had this scenario arise, but allowing one person to end the meeting in certain circumstances, let's say a majority wants to take up another item, or they want to have more discussion for the mayor to, just to be able to end it without the majority in agreement, is contrary to the policies that I've reviewed, and is contrary to what the League recommends as well. For that reason, we have not had that happen, but that's what it's protecting against.
Yes, Senator, I don't have a problem with that, because, you know, once we're done with our agenda items, you know, it's normally after we take the last vote, there's nothing else there. And if you bring something else up new for a vote, it's not on the agenda, and that irritates me. And that happened once here, in, in the 10 years I've been here, and I did not like that.
Mayor.
I, I think it makes sense for, you know, once you're done with your last item, you adjourn and let the mayor do that.
Sorry, excuse me. The scenario, and I, I might not have presented it very well. Let's say you have three items of business, and the mayor adjourns after number one.